Good evening, everybody. It is February 12th at 6:00 PM. Calling and voting to order. All right, everyone, rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We are all here, so thank you and thank you Fritz for being here as well. Uh, we need to move on to adopting the agenda. I'll need a motion in a second. Uh, is there any changes we'd like to make? I'll make the motion. I, I do want to make one change. I wanted to remove the discussion on the downtown board and move that out to March. We're going to get some more information from Bargo Young and some other people, so I would like to just remove it. Well, I'll make the motion that we adopt the agenda, removing the downtown board. Did you say March? Yeah, the March meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you, Larry. All right, Paul, one in favor of moving, uh, removing number 10 and adopting agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there any discussion on our consent agenda?
The only thing I would, uh, I would like to do is send a thank you out to Fay, candidate for the committee. If I could do that now, I'm just wanting to make sure.
Thank you. Yep, please do. Uh, and anything else? Any other questions? Okay, I'll need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. I'll make the motion.
I will second.
All right. Thank you, Fay. You're our secretary. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on to our public forum. Uh, I have one. If, if anybody's looking for some, we have forums back there, but Kevin Schuman is my first one. Please join us, Kevin.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for the public forum on Friday night, uh, discussing the industrial park. I thought there were some really great, um, questions and answers and dialogue, and I just respected the whole tone of the evening. There was just a really great community. Thanks, thanks so much. Um, I just wanted to make a couple other, um, comments about, um, my concerns with the marijuana growing, um, facility coming into the industrial park. Uh, two things which I made, um, limited reference to on Friday night, but a real major concern that I have is knowing that they want to get in very quickly, but knowing that the legislation going through the state is not in the final form. And even as they presented on Friday night, Ed mentioned that they, they have changed some things because there had been massive changing in what was allowed and what wasn't allowed, um, even the last week or so. And so, the analogy that I, I came up with is since we don't know what the final form of the pill is going to be, it's almost like signing a blank contract and say, let me just fill it in and we'll go with that. And so, I have no concerns about what might end up being in the hill that would obfuscate the city too. And I'm especially concerned about the portion where it says, where even in their proposal, they said that the state doesn't legislate the capacity on study, even if they wanted to, then they could operate without state permission. And so, to me, that was just all red flags of not what I would want to get in our community. And the second part of that is that, um, the other people who are interested in, uh, industrial park are more local residents than actually living in town here. And I would certainly like to support our community residents in the space of the industrial park too. So, as, uh, Lori voted on that, I just want to consider those two factors as well and appreciate it and that you're doing it, so thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, any, anybody else above the forum? I have one. Okay, we'll move forward to our old business. Um, number one on our old business is discussion of the Shisaba County, uh, payment in lieu of taxes distribution. And Troy, you put that information in the package. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. We had discussed this a while ago, a conversation for the fire department over just the city for calls that are made there. We just did a little bit of investigating. What, uh, I would like to do at this point, if I did contact Senator Kran's office and I did hear back from them, what they would like us to do is contact the county auditor and ask them for, um, just some information on how many cities have been awarded, what have they been awarded with the bill, where did it go, kind of get some parameters as far as, you know, how, how a city can be received this money. So, at, at this point, I guess what I would like to do is just ask the council if we can have, um, city staff send an email out to the county auditor and just ask them, you know, for example, who received these pill payments last year or the year before, how much was, was awarded, um, what were the parameters that they used? Maybe a little information on his statute 477.10. I don't know, maybe our attorney can help us out with that as well. So, um, we, it sounds like from what I'm reading through it, it does look, because we have, uh, we have a park here taking up a fair amount of what could be city property, uh, not to mention the fact that our fire chief has mentioned numerous times that a large percentage of his calls are to that park. Um, so that, that's wearing terror and all the equipment, the money spent and everything else, so, um, that's what this is about. And I guess at this point, I was kind of hoping we could get an agreement just to ask, uh, send an email to the county auditor and ask them, you know, what does it take, what does it take to qualify for the pill payments? And if, uh, if we can, if we can start receiving it.
Thank you, Troy. Any, any discussion, questions?
Just a little history on, on pills for the city. Back in my early days with the council, there was one year that, um, the county board approved thirty-eight thousand dollars in pill money for the city of Taylor Falls based on the previous year's, um, rescues and what it cost in the interstate, state park. So, um, yes, the, the, uh, the pill money is, is basically to compensate the city for, uh, this interstate state park land that is within the city limits and we can collect property taxes from. So, um, so the one year we got that money, and then the next year we were told that it was just a one-time payment and that they would, um, the county board would take the pill money from the state and distribute it fairly throughout the entire county to the residents. And so, um, since then, I think the city of Taylor Falls has received maybe nine hundred to a thousand dollars in pill money instead of fully compensating us for rescues in the park. You know, to go, to get the money, we have to go, you know, petition the county.
Okay.
To, um, you know, point out to them that we are the sole, um, it's our sole responsibility, not the only responsibility, but we're the only ones that go into the park and rescue. And we know that there's several, um, throughout the year, whether it's in the Fountain River or Rock climbers.
Um, one other thing, if I can just add that, um, let's turn over to Senator's office. I've got some figures here for the past five years. Uh, in 2019, it was two hundred thousand dollars that the county had to disperse. In 2020, it was three hundred and nineteen thousand, in 2021, three twenty-three, and 2022, three twenty-four. And last year, it was five hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, so, um, that amount has increased.
Yeah, I, I agree with you because what I was told that would actually went to just like six hundred and eighty thousand dollars last year. So, the money is there, but you know, the county, it's up to the county, the county's discretion to, um, disperse it however they see fairly. So, it's up to us to go lead our case. Probably worthwhile talking with Commissioner Green as well. That was, he's our representative on the council, he's our commissioner, so.
I think we could start with an email and then I'll reach out to Commissioner Green. Um, maybe we'll invite him to our, one of our meetings, but I'll let him know when we're asking for it. And he can come again. I won't surprise him. Um, but, uh, maybe he can come and just fill us on our emails.
And if I can, I do have a template, um, set up, um, and email that I've started. If I could just send that to Sherri perhaps, she's got something to go with it and get it decided.
That'd be great. Thank you. Lee, anything?
Nope.
For all the work that they're doing? Yeah, wonderful. Any other discussion? Thank you, Troy. I really appreciate it. I'm all over this. Um, number two on old business is, uh, determining who we will be selling the business park properties to and an update from Elizabeth.
Fritz, so today can be a big day because today's, um, we could potentially be deciding who we sell the business park to. And that's important because there's a lot of paperwork that needs to be done for the specific, you know, person or, um, company that we are, you know, bringing those documents for, so, selling to. Uh, so, um, trying to think of where we were at the last time that I gave an update, but the newest addition is we have two additional people who are interested in purchasing land in the business park. We did not have the proposals in last week when we were evaluating them. Uh, they're associated with Hirsch, so one is Hirsch Contract Contracting Incorporated. And they are residential and commercial contracting servicing Minnesota. HCI is what they abbreviate themselves as. Um, primary business is residential modeling, vinyl siding, asphalt shingles, and snow and water damage. The other one would be Hirsch Metal Erectors is a commercial metal installer serving the Minnesota and Wisconsin markets. Uh, they primarily work on schools, hospitals, government buildings, uh, parking facility, facilities, and airports. It's, um, maybe they can give a better update, but they made it very clear that they don't want this to take away from their primary goal of having Hirsch Ironworks on the east half of the business park. Um, but they work with them and they knew that they would be, um, a good fit for the business park as well, especially since they somewhat work together. So, I just want to, uh, consider those additional proposals and then the other ones are, um, are Andrew Nick, an excavating contractor, and we have Sean Tetrells, the marijuana grower, and, and Andrew. So, that's my update on who we're working with today, and you can see all their proposals attached. Um, I do have a site visit with Hirsch Ironworks this week, actually tomorrow. So, we'll be kind of mimicking some of the distances from like the residences and the current noise that they're making with keeping in mind that that's not going to be an accurate representation because they're going to have more sound communication in place, but I'll be able to present that to you the next time. So, that is in the works. Um, a public works went out today, actually. Kevin said the hydrants are flushed, the lift stations are inspected, all the pumps are working. So, that was a good update. All the interested parties are aware that they are needing to come by in lots in order to build on them. Right now, there's two outlets that can't be built on, and they are okay with that. And, um, I said the council may not then incur the cost of that and understand that and are okay with that. Um, I've asked for tax assessment estimates from all three, um, parties. So, you can see those attached and evaluate those, how you see fit. The business park was on our tax payment program with, uh, and working with the HRA, EBA. It's my understanding that all of that paperwork is wrapped up. We don't have to worry about, um, time that into our sale paperwork. And also, that case is closed. Um, the unfortunate news I do have is that that deed grant is expired. Um, and there's not a way to renew it right now. I did ask if, um, you know, they see any other opportunity, um, like that for our business park, so please let me know. Um, but as far as that grant that we did have that is expired. Um, we have a planning commission meeting coming up tomorrow. We have the bill requirement of, uh, providing city council with how the sale of the business park is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So, I have my staff recommendation on that for, um, planning commission in the works and it'll be done by tomorrow. One bid I, um, which will be adopting next council meeting, or when we actually sell them, is council has to adopt criteria, um, for the applicants to receive that subsidy. So, it's subsidized, it's, it's for a dollar, it's less than, since we're selling it for less than market value, it's considered a subsidy, and so council has to adopt criteria. I did receive, um, kind of a template and examples from Nick Fellers. Um, and I don't, I don't think I attached that, but that's something that I'll be sending you guys and you can evaluate it and work on it. And I think Fritz and Nick are going to be working on that together as well. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled. Um, the public notice just went out this morning for February 26th, 2024. So, you guys are going to come speak again. And Nick and Fritz are going to be working on the final sales documents. So, that's kind of like the process that's in place where we're at. You know, we're just looking at everything we have during the assessment. Um, I encourage you to thoroughly discuss everything and just know that it is okay to table, um, all of it or half of it for another day.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions for Elizabeth?
Uh, the new proposals for tonight, um, those aren't, those aren't, uh, considering the outlets to be built on. Is that correct?
Um, I think it was, I can ask Mr. Hirsch, but I think they were more for the southwest two parcels. Is that correct?
Yep, the lots are listed on the proposals as well.
So, the east, I also put, put one copy on the back, so if anybody wanted to see that, we did put one copy. So, I can, so the east three parcels are all in their original, in Hirsch's original plans, including the other. The new potential, uh, ones are for the southernmost two on the west side. The other one is still, would still be available in one of Hirsch's. Any sense these are due? Proposals, do these also have to go in front of the planning commission or is that on our table tonight? After your question.
I don't think that, well, um, I'll, I'll ask. We might have to redo the recommendation of why the new sales are compliant with the comprehensive plan, but that would be easy because they're very similar to the ones that are already existing. So, just be duplicating it.
I would say these would be not tonight, just because they were just laid out, so, just so everybody has it and we can think about it.
To, to cover our bases though, since I haven't submitted a document to planning commission, yeah, we haven't made it yet. We could just add them to the possible contenders.
I would recommend that because planning commission isn't recommending which ones we do. It's whether or not they comply or.
Any other questions? Okay. How I kind of want to do this is, um, let's discuss each, uh, current, um, interest that we have in our business park. And I just want to go down the line that's in the, in the packet. Again, we do not need to vote on it tonight or we can. It's up to, uh, everybody here. So, uh, I would like to start with, um, Hirsch Ironworks for the east half of the park. So, I need a motion in a second for discussion and then we can vote if we want to vote on the sale.
I'll make the motion that we open discussion on, uh, Hirsch, uh, Metal Works, uh, east three parcels of the business park.
I'll second.
It was a tie. All right. Okay, Tim, you want to start?
Yeah, well, this is what I'm really excited about. I, there's not much I don't like about it. Um, I had a couple of, um, questions about the fencing and the facades of the buildings and how they're oriented and stuff, but I, I don't, none of that is a deal breaker, um, for me. Just some suggestions that I think can make, uh, instead of, you know, fencing the whole perimeter, I hope your office building looks nice and parking isn't, uh, ugly either. Instead of having like a penitentiary look to the, to the business park, it'd be nice to have some buildings showing to the public, yeah, as they're driving by, if that's amenable to, to Hirsch. And then also the brick, brick the sides and public, uh, vis- visible area instead of just on, I think you had it noted at least from what I saw, um, in the plan, just on the large, um, fabrication building. Maybe I just misread that, but, um, I liked the orientation, where it had it set up. I think it's a perfect fit. I'm excited to see there's potentially more, uh, that they'd like to do there. My one concern about that is putting all our eggs in one basket. And we still have one parcel, um, left to go, which I don't know if, if that would be a draw to sell that parcel or if it would be a negative, just having it the only one there. But I'm very supportive of Hirsch and their, their proposal. Nicely done. Thank you.
I agree. I think it's a good fit for the business park. It's what we've been looking for all along. Uh, made a great presentation. It's an ongoing business and, um, and I, like I said, I think it'd be a really good fit.
Thank you. Lee?
Uh, I think it'd be a great fit for the business park. Made some great jobs for the city.
Troy?
Yeah, I agree with, um, most everything that's been said so far, uh, so far. I'm, um, I'm very excited about this opportunity. And, and I think what I, what I want to do now is just take this opportunity to thank Hirsch and, and everybody, all the businesses that came forward, um, for this because, um, this council and, and me in particular, but I think this council in general, we have an opportunity to make a decision that's fundamentally going to change the character of this town. And I think if, as far as Hirsch is concerned, um, it's an improvement. It's the jobs we've been waiting for. It's the excitement. There's a lot of people I talk to, um, and we might talk more about this later, but we've had too much pending for too long. We've had, um, this lot, this acreage pending for too long. We've had the commercial lot pending for too long. And now we have this deed grant pending for too long to the point that, that it expired. So, I am excited about the opportunity and I think a lot of other people are as well. It's, it's time for us to get moving and I think we should take advantage of this when we can.
Thank you, Troy. I'll just, great area. The proposal is amazing. Um, I like the growth plan that you outlined. Family business coming into town, all about family. I think it's amazing. Um, I didn't see anything that caught me off guard. I do like what Tim says. The office to make it look attractive from the outside would look, look good. We don't need to, the bridge and fence and the, you know, scariness, so, um, especially if we have other parcels to sell after that. So, um, thank you guys for stepping up, um, and wanting to be a part of our community. We're very lucky to have you guys here. And that's all I have, so.
I have a couple, well, maybe one question, two parts for, for Elizabeth. The way I read it, it's not a deal breaker, the, the fence height or the building height, but they would both require variance to look taller. Do you see any issues with that? Is that a planning commission? What, when do we need to address that?
Well, I wouldn't be able to permit it until, uh, the variance was granted. And our variance process is currently out of date and we're not able to really follow what's in our weapons right now. I would actually have to go to the state and follow that. So, that would do kind of going through a process. It's not going to be as fluent as it, it was already announced. So, I'll have to do some research and maybe one of Fritz's on topical about doing that. So, it is a small hurdle, um, and it's my understanding that, um, I mean, the variance process is significantly changed where it makes it, uh, gives the city a little more control on what they do and don't want to allow to report. It's very strict.
But if they were, if we were to decide for them to move forward, that kind of work could happen in concert with their plans before they ever started actual construction. That process could probably be done.
Like, what do you, what do you mean?
No variances. If we said we want Hirsch to move forward and we want them, we want to consider their variances.
Yeah, we can start working on the process. First, they have to own the property and then make it apply to the variance.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right, uh, I'd like to call for a vote to, uh, sell Hirsch Ironworks, uh, the east half of our business park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not asking you to vote because I can hear all of you guys saying so. All right, let's move on. Our next.
Can, can I say a question about, is that, um, contingent upon an acceptable purchase agreement? So, if that comes back to us, you may have to approve the purchase agreement. Because there may be terms and conditions in there that.
My understanding, if I may, Mr. Hirsch. My understanding is that what you just passed was the language that was suggested, um, in the staffing report, which indicated, gave you two property IDs and said with conditions to determine, to be determined at the next city council meeting. So, I'm going to be directed from this to draft necessary documentation. You're not approving that, so I haven't seen. You will review that and you will make those determinations at that time.
So, Fritz, just reviewing the exact motion that I wrote, would you recommend reusing that exact motion?
Well.
I would.
I was going to say that's what I heard him say, but if anybody wasn't quite clear on that, it's the motion that says moved, seconded to approve, uh, to commence, commence with the sale of property to Hirsch Ironworks for property IDs indicated there and three of them with conditions to be determined at the next city council meeting. You all have that in front of you.
Yep.
That's what I meant to make the motion.
That's what I heard. I can read them from day one to day two, but.
Yeah, that should probably end up.
Okay. Okay. All right, uh, next, uh, on discussion is our next, uh, business that's interested in developing is Kingkind. I don't know if anybody is here from Kingkind. If we have any questions, I don't think they could make it tonight. So, I'll need a second, a motion in a second. So I'll need a second, a motion in a second to discuss the sale of the business park to King Kind.
I'll make the motion as we open discussion on the sale of the west parcels to King Kind.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. This time I'm going to go down to Troy. I will go this way, so.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I had that opportunity because we talked about pending earlier and properties are pending, the grants are pending. In my concern with moving forward with this particular proposal is we have something else pending. And that would be the license. We were told about this a couple of times. The license, because it's still tied up to requirements or the application procedure. The state of Minnesota has not determined how to do that yet. Now, we were told that at first it was going to be 2025. And then I think a couple of minutes ago, we were told it was possibly June or July because of the high-powered lobbyists that they have and the attorney that they have. Either way, if we approve this tonight, we're going into that same territory of something pending. When we have an opportunity to move forward with this, it would essentially just tie up this property and we would have to wait to find out if, if it can even be licensed, if they can even get a license. So at this point, I am not in favor of this and I will be voting against this particular proposal.
Thank you. Lee?
Same feelings as Troy there with the state of Minnesota not having their final rulings and such. We don't know what we're getting into and I'm, I'd be voting against the King Kind property.
Larry?
You know, most of the time, let me sit up here, the decisions are very easy to make. You know, it's usually a slam dunk. These are, these proposals are what we've really been waiting for and holding the business park for. And, you know, I've listened to the King Kind team plead their case. And to me, they're quite convincing, you know, but it's not, like I said, and I've listened to what the public has said as well for and against the type of business. But, you know, ultimately, this is what we've been looking for for the business park. I think it's a good fit. And, you know, I feel fairly confident that what they say is going to come to fruition. So I would be in favor of approving the King Kind proposal to build their cannabis growing facility in the business park. Thank you, Larry.
Tim?
Thank you. At this point, I don't think I have enough information to really make a decision. I'm, I'm not going to the point where I would vote against it. I would like to table it. I've gotten some additional information. I still have a lot of questions about it. I talked with Kevin from, you know, the environmental impact, our public works soup about the demand for water. Our system can handle it as far as he is aware right now. It is water-intensive operation. There are some other aspects of their business plan that I think are too unclear right now. I'm less worried about the state. And what reason I'm less worried about the state getting their stuff together is because there's a lot of money sitting on the table. Most politicians, if they see money, they go as hard and fast as they can. I can't see the state, especially with the makeup of the legislature and the governor today letting this slip by. I just can't. They're going to get their act together. The most recent changes were to try to expedite the cultivation and production so that when retail establishments open up, there's going to be product for itself. I'm less concerned about that than I am about the business plan itself. So my preference would be to table it until we have more information.
Thank you. I, I had a lot of phone calls today. I've had a lot of phone calls like you guys probably have in the last couple of weeks. And Friday really was nice to see everybody come out. If I sit and think about it, it's really gone fifty-fifty this town. Fifty percent for, fifty percent against. And all have good reasons why or, or. Again, I, I echo what Tim said about the state. They're going to, they're going to pass it. I mean, they're going to have their licensing. They're going to have it all ready to go. It's just a matter of time and it'll probably pick up speed here now that they're all back. I, I would be interested in an environmental impact study. He mentioned that they had already started one, but we didn't get to see it. And I, I think it's kind of odd that, and I know things come up, but I would like them here if we were going to vote for something so we have questions that we could ask. So I, I would say let's table it. I'm not opposed necessarily of having them here. I, I mean, that's a lot of jobs, but we have some unanswered questions I think that they need to be here to answer. So I, I would like to table that too.
Just for the planning commission, say, and Elizabeth, I did ask them about the water utilization and they, they said in their plan for the number of square feet and plants they're growing was about five point five million gallons a year. They would recycle as much as they possibly can. And I asked them about electrical utilization and if they've considered any solar or battery backup. They have to have backup power in case of an outage. And, you know, rainwater collection, those kind of things. Have they considered any of that? So hopefully they'll be able to come back at some point and answer those questions. But I, I, I think I've, I've heard it's about sixty-forty for me and the people that I've talked to. I had one person reach out from their hospital bed today saying that they, they're in favor of it. So it is a mix though. It's, it's pretty close. To Larry's point, from a structure, it's a perfect fit for that park. Low noise, low traffic. No odor. I mean, it checks all those boxes for me. It's the business plan that I'm most concerned about.
And I'd like to pick up on that if I could because it is, that is one of my concerns as well. And I, I guess I'm going to go back to something I said before. This, this is why we were elected. This is why we're sitting up here. We're supposed to be making these tough decisions. As far as I'm concerned, tabling this is, is, is just more mediocrity. It's more pending. It's more kicking the can down the road. Just because we, just because we vote no doesn't mean they can't come back with a proposal at a different time. But it, but it does lock up the process as far as I'm concerned. Going to the project summary, the project summary that we have in our packet is this one, correct? And I guess I have some concern about how prepared King Kind was to, well, for this proposal and it would have been nice if they were here to ask, to get us some questions and maybe our zoning administrator can answer some of these. First of all, why did we get this project summary? Because I don't even see Taylor's Falls on here. I see Shisago City, but I don't see Taylor's Falls. So where was this, where was the seriousness or the intention or just, just the work ethic to do a search and replace if you're going to give us a proposal? So what we were looking at is a, is a project summary for Shisago City and we're supposed to make assumptions off that. If we're serious, can we put, at least put Taylor's Falls in there? Can we show up tonight for the discussion and the vote? I do have some concerns about the, this project summary as well because we have, we have one individual as a sole member and manager of a managed LLC and here he states he has over twenty years of experience. Where is that? What's that in? I don't have any history there. We've got a, we've got a CEO under King Kind, which he represents, but he's actually the sole member and manager of the Midwest Holding Company. A CEO with a fifty-one percent owner in King Kind with no explanation of who owns the other forty-nine percent. And that's all secondary because this isn't even addressed to us. It says Shisago City. So I guess at this point, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of tabling this. I, I think we, I think we can I think we can own up to our responsibilities and just make this a yes or no vote at this point. So I would be opposed to tabling and I would still be opposed to be the proposition as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I believe strongly enough in this that I would go with tabling until we get more information. Troy seems to have a lot of questions and, and some good questions for, you know, information on the project itself. So I would go along with tabling until we can get King Kind people here to answer the questions.
And I guess one of the reasons for tabling it is that we, we have other proposals as well. If all of this goes to the planning commission and then we get the report back on whether or not it fits the common plan, et cetera. We at least have all the information we need at the next meeting to make a decision. That's.
But I guess my question.
My.
My question is why didn't we have the information when we needed it like now? I mean, if, if this business is serious, if they're serious about doing business in Taylor's Falls, we should have had a project summary and a proposal that reflected that. And I don't see that. We, they still have the time to do that, but I don't see it right now.
You are correct. Well, right now we have a motion in a second on to vote for it. So we would have to modify that, amend it, or we can push through. And Fritz, if we vote on this, I, this is curiosity. Because a lot of times when we vote on stuff, if it fails, it fails. If they come back with it different, with our name on it, proposal and information, I mean, do we reopen it then? Or is it still considered done? We can't move forward?
No, I mean, you can reconsider the decision, but Mr. Mar, if I may.
Please.
If there's a motion to approve, if there's another motion to, to table it, that's considered to be a superior motion.
Okay.
Just, it, it makes it a little cleaner.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to move to table it, the other motion is superseded by that motion.
Okay.
So we don't have to go through gymnastics.
Sure, I like that. Alright. Would anybody be interested in making a motion to table the sale to King Kind?
I'll make that motion. I would second.
Okay. Any discussion on, any further discussion on the motion to table the sale of the business park to King Kind? Okay. All in favor of tabling the sale to King Kind of the business park, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Moving on to our next interested business, Andrew Nick has a business proposal in there. Thank you so much for coming on Friday to him giving us your dream and vision. We're super excited to hear it. I'll need a motion in a second for us to discuss Andrew Nick's business proposal.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Another time. Alright, Tim, why don't we start with you?
I appreciate and respect and am excited for Andrew and his business. But I have to speak from a city perspective. If we have options, this one doesn't seem, it seems it's a small venture, you know, fully developed business park. It would seem to me a better fit, something like this, to go into a, a greenfield agricultural plot, if you will. It doesn't have all the improvements, city water, sewer, street, et cetera, et cetera. And it's a small enough operation that I don't think we're going to get the tax revenue out of it that we need. Not that I'm all about money, but the city needs money to function. And the other competing proposals provide a better return to the city, if you will. Especially the two Hirsch ones. If there's a potential for the outlot, I would, I would take a look at that. But I, I think this operation on the three parcels on the west just wouldn't serve the city well. As excited as I am for, for him and his business, I just don't think it'd be the right one for the city.
Tim, maybe Andrew Nick can confirm, but I think he was only interested in the northwest, the one outlot.
Just the outlot?
It wouldn't be the entire path.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct, Fred?
So then it fits. And it's complimentary if we want with the Hirsch proposals as well.
Yeah, those three could fit on the west path.
We'd need to change the, like, to that property. Because you have three of them listed on the bottom. That's okay. I'm just.
Apologize.
So that's why I was going to do this.
I changed it on something else today. I shouldn't have changed that.
Larry?
Well, you know, I like the idea of giving him a shot, getting him started. And if there's any way that we can fit him into the park, I think we should take a look at it because, you know, he's eager for it. And, and, you know, everybody needs, you know, a start. And I'd like for Taylor's Falls to be that city to say, okay, we'll take a chance on you. So if we, if there's a way we can figure it out to get him into the park, you know, I think we should take a look at it. Can I just add one more thing? Elizabeth, will you have for us either before or at our next council meeting the estimated tax revenues from Chase for these new proposals as well?
I, I just received those this morning. Sent them on Friday afternoon, so I can work with them to try to make that happen.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I did notice too, I made an error on the parcel IDs, which has been a little bit more, the first parcel ID that ends in two six for King Kind and Andrew Nick parcel IDs is actually supposed to be two three.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I'm with, I'm with Larry. Any way we can get him to fit in there, I'd be great. Keep some local business going here in the community. Appreciate it.
Troy?
Well, I want to thank you, Andrew, because again, I want to, I appreciate that you came forward and we are, we again, like I said, have an opportunity to really make some important decisions at this point. I think just the way things worked out, you, you kind of got in there a little late and you're trying to get some stuff together and.
I really, I have some questions. It's really all I think.
Right, well, no, that's good. That's good. That's, that, it's, it's, it's a more serious situation than you thought it was going to be, right? But that's a good thing and I want, and I want to encourage you to stick with it and come back.
Sure.
I would like some more information as well. Again, on the, the business, the proposal, what you plan to do. I think we're still looking, still need some maybe drawing sketches, what you've got going on. And I think, I, I would hope that you would, you would stick with it and come back if it, if it's not this particular location. But I think that's still a possibility as well. But at this time, for, almost like King Kind, but, but not exactly this, you just need it some more time. You know, some of our, you have, you have less time than some of our other businesses to get this stuff together. The other question I had is, has Andrew been before the planning commission yet?
I don't believe he has.
Okay.
Uh, Friday is only.
Yeah, so, so I think that'd be, that'd be a good idea too. If we're going to follow the process, we should really have that involved. But I, again, thank you for coming forward, stick with it. We're, we're going to, I think we have a council who's going to do everything they can to make it work for you at some point. But I'm just not sure that tonight is, tonight is it right now?
I love small businesses and it, it excites. I love small businesses and it excites me to see your dream and vision and the information that you did provide us. You know, I mean, I hope it exceeds, exceeds it. I think he'd fit wonderfully out there in that Outlet. I don't know if now's the time for us to vote. I guess I'm stuck in the middle where I think I want to. Because I think he'd fit there, I really do. I think it would be fun, then I'm the only business again, that's what I'm about. I'm lucky to work for one, and so I think your vision is gonna be wonderful. And Larry, you're right, it'd be fun to be the ones that help with that.
There was a suggestion from the attorney that we do have the option to table this as well.
Thank you, Trey.
Oh, can I ask a question? Again, Andrew? Andrew?
Oh, sorry.
Are you, are you ready to go? I mean, if we said yes to your business, what do you think?
I'm gonna, I'm doing everything I can to get it started this year with or without the Outlet or, you know, but it would sure be a lot easier if I had a space to park equipment and store trailers and stuff.
Okay. And you basically said that you'd start with the storage and then next year you build your office space?
Yeah, and, you know, if that Outlet's not buildable, I mean, I'll have to get creative on how to get a...
So, Andy, do you have some space where you can park his equipment, your house?
Right.
Okay, so, to his point, Elizabeth, they're listed as Outlets, but that doesn't mean they're unbuildable, correct?
They are currently unbuildable because they're listed as Outlets. However, I think they were, it's my understanding that they were intentionally labeled as Outlets, not because they have dimensional standards, but because they wanted those four parcels near the road developed first. So, they can, so we would have to resurvey it or...
Flat it.
Flat it. We have to make it not an Outlet before they can build, which I believe can't be done.
Process would be just to have it flat, and so...
What's the correct terminology, Fritz?
Well, it's legal pixie dust is what I call it. A little bit of sprinkling here and there, but it should be something, it's a technical thing that you can do. And it's not gonna be that hurt, so I don't believe it.
And we're not building it for another year, or you're not building it for another year, and so... Would fencing be able to be put up ahead of time?
Would it be a little, no? No? It'd be structured, so? I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we have two options, we can put it through a vote or we can table it.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we table it, consistent with what we did with King Kind. If we move forward with a vote on this, on that Outlet, it would diminish the King Kind opportunity. So, to be consistent, I think we should table this one until our next meeting. And let the planning commission do their stuff and get a more detailed proposal.
At least it gets a roll. Yeah, I agree with that. It also gives us an opportunity to get the other two in front of planning and then we have in our regular packages for discussion. I'm one of four people to decide, so...
Yeah, I think ideally, if we ever had the time, and Elizabeth's done a great job with pushing this forward, and I appreciate the planning commission doing their work tomorrow night as well. It was a pretty compressed schedule for all parties. Hirsch gets the gold star because they had all their stuff together in a very nice way. But it would've been nice to have had all of this tonight, we're gonna be making the decision, but we don't, so...
Okay, Tim has a motion to table the sale of the Outlet to Andrew Nick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. Any further discussion on tabling? Okay. All in favor of tabling to our next council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
You guys all came here for like all these really contentious votes. It's not fun, but it is. All right, we're gonna move on to new business. We have a Wantage Days update. Lynn and Tim, you wanna join us?
Well, we're just here to give you a quick update, what we got planned here so far. So far, the city's planned and scheduled in for Lumberjack's coming. We plan on Kids' Day running from eleven to three this year. And some of the activities that we'll be having is the Lumberjack Show. We have in the petting zoo, full accomplishment petting zoo, bouncy house, paint printing and painting and loom tying and whatnot. Time on our schedule so far, we've had, we've hired a band for Friday night. Go on that, we're waiting for home maids to decide what they're gonna do for Saturday night, but we're moving ahead with our things. Things are moving along pretty well. Got in some nice donations, I Q to the Brighton Mayor for his generous donation. And we happened to get a thousand dollar donation anonymously to the Taylor's Falls Alliance Club to be used for Wantage Days. So, we're here to give that tonight too, which is a nice bonus. So, yeah, we just wanted to let you know we're here moving along with it and we'll be putting out our fundraising letter here shortly. You know, for the local businesses, we don't get it out too early because it's a little bedtime a year that it's asking for money. But we tried to push it out towards the spring, we put out a letter to local businesses, but we're approaching the banks and stuff now and hopefully we get some good feedback from them, so... What else we got? Oh, we got also, we inherited a Wantage chat down there. If you noticed, it's down in the lot down there by the drive-in. Our intention is to move that to the northwest corner of the lot, it's kind of staked where it's gonna go. This winter hasn't cooperated a whole lot, as far as frozen ground, it's snow decided on, so we're kind of waiting for that so we don't make some big indentations in the lot and stuff. But we want to move it down there, it's gonna take some refurbishing to redo it, or we use it as a snack shack per se. Lions Club will sell food and stuff out of there for the Lumberjack Show and the kids stuff while they're Saturday afternoon, so... Anyway, that's kind of what we got on our schedule so far. Like I said, things are moving in a good direction, like putting up...
Bingo Friday night?
Bingo Friday night? That'll be it, parts direct, let's do bingo. So, we're happy to take care of it there, so... Find one now. Tim?
The only thing we kind of left last year, kind of started to try to get the fireworks out of this side of the river instead of us to St. Coria's side, so we'd like to pursue that again, probably sooner or later. I'm not sure exactly how we go about that, it's...
Right, yeah, it was exiled with the cabochas on that last year, as far as down by the dam down there. And the shells aren't big enough to go up in the overlook up here to shoot out to show over the river valley, so... Would've been a fireworks show, whatever, really increased the price, so we chose not to do that. It's just another item where we are looking at.
Who pays for the fireworks show? Does that get joined?
The head, you know, we helped donate to it in the past and mostly St. Coria's taking care of that. And then we, we got money left over at the end of the year, we tried to give them a check, you know?
Hopeset the fireworks house.
And we give what we can.
I do want to say one thing, thank you to Tim and the Lions Club for putting the letters together to send to the bank. I hope they will get a little involvement from...
Yes, I'm not a letter writer. So, do you guys have any questions or any direction? I think we're doing good.
Sounds great, especially the Lumberjack Show, that was a real gas the last time they had it.
Yeah, unfortunately, it rained that day and it was, you know, it wasn't good, but maybe... And I talked to one of the gals that took care of the lighting festival, and they were so good at social media and the information that they got out. And if we can kind of simulate what they did, hopefully we'll get more interest in it, you know? If we really need to drive and pull people in from outside of town to come down and try to fill this up. And like I said, they did a bang up job on their social media. And it's cheaper than what we can do actually literature advertising, but we'll do well. But we need to, you know, start that early and own the bank, basically.
And I'm not gonna ruin the surprise of the band, but I'll just say a little bit about them, if I may. The band that was selected has quite a following, so we hope that'll draw some more people to town as well. And they do their own social media work as well, so hopefully between their advertising and what Lynn just explained, we'll see some new faces in town.
And again, you know, the private band is usually, the drive-in has been so gracious in sponsoring that band that it's really taken a load off us. And, you know, talking to them, they said they'd keep up with the same thing as what they've done in the past, so that's their goal. I know I presented a couple of bills to the city to pay cap or pay some money down, and I think Michelle's done that, but I haven't followed up, but so it pays some deposits. I think we're doing good.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thanks, I'm gonna give this back to you guys. You did a deposit.
I always say cash. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim, thanks, Lynn. Number two on new business is the gambling application for Lions Club. I'll need a second to approve that. I'll make the motion to approve it. Any discussion?
I know that the full disclosure, I think, for two of us.
All right, we have two Lions members, so thank you so much. All in favor of approving gambling application, say aye.
Aye.
All right, number three is discuss the adoption of the Shisago County's new sanitary ordinance for private septic systems. Liz, I'll let you explain that.
Sure. So, currently, Shisago County is doing the installation inspections and compliance of the private sanitary system. So, if they're not hooked up to city sewer, Shisago County is taking care of that. Upon a review of Shisago County's own ordinance for sanitary, sanitary ordinance, they noticed we do not have a contract, they don't have the contract with the city. It's my understanding, it's kind of like a handshake at this point in time, shows something that they've been doing a while. So, when they re, when they adopt their new sanitary ordinance in March, we have to opt in or out of their new sanitary ordinance. So, my recommendation would be to opt in, have them continue to do those inspections and compliance. You know, we can definitely review the sanitary ordinance that they come up with, and if we don't like what they have, we can consider writing our own. I do think we have enough ordinancees to write at this point in time though, from my standpoint. One of the reasons to go with Shisago County and not adopt our own is that we have to hire out or get, we have to speed on doing those inspections. It would be more time on compliance, and they can just do it like a lot cheaper. I think like you would have the price of what you would hire out to do. So, those are the reasons to go with it. So, we don't have to vote on anything tonight, but I just didn't want it to, you know, come out of nowhere when we're making a big decision in March.
Are those costs borne by the homeowner or the city, the inspection?
I think it's covered by permit application, I think. So, the homeowner, the homeowner would pay, and then, you know, compliance isn't exactly the form, so unless covered under Shisago's blanket of some sort. But when somebody's like, have to compliance, you would fine them potentially, but when you do compliance, you don't always go for fine, the objective is always compliance, so that, that does cost money as well.
You never did any of that for the county when you were in the county? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I did the private, I, yeah, so I have the credentials for Wisconsin. I don't think they can transfer to Minnesota, I live in it.
So, is, excuse me, is there some inspection for sewers, stuff? I mean, I've been over, I've been here nine years, I'm not aware, is there some yearly or? And we have a guy come out and do ours and bring them and say it might be built.
Like a maintenance?
For me?
Like a maintenance?
Yeah.
General inspection, because we've been here twenty-some years.
Nobody's had to come out and say you're gonna sell.
Point of sale.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so in Wisconsin, they actually have you inspect and pump your tank every three years, but I was told Minnesota doesn't have that, so that's a little different, but...
Well, if you had a holding tank, it's different.
We had to have ours done when I bought it back in two thousand fifteen. They had to inspect it and then they gave us a third year and the county hung it or something.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm familiar with the general concept, there's some slight difference between Minnesota and Wisconsin.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, this would be an agenda item in one of the March meetings, and we get the ordinance in advance to review?
Yeah, I could, once it's done, I can bring it to council for review before they vote on it.
Okay.
There, wait. No. I might have to ask you for a draft, because I think it's part of their code that we are in our own.
Let's take a look and see if we can add it either in the next meeting or in March meeting.
Yeah, and we're basically going into that contract that March would be a...
Yeah.
Right, be part of, okay. And if we get a chance to see it first, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I'll ask for it, thanks.
Thank you, Liz. Moving on to number four is the approval of a water lab test equipment for Public Works. We have the information in the packet. Need it to hear, Tim?
I'll make a motion that we open discussion then. It was all of the water lab test equipment?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
So, we, this is, I believe primarily for the fluoride testing. Our current equipment does not work. Minnesota requires that we do daily tests on fluoride and report back to the state on a monthly basis, and we're unable to do that today, so it really is a compliance issue that needs to be resolved.
Do we have any more information, what our current equipment does not work? How does it not work?
Just aged, aged out, I believe. Normally, you can calibrate them, but this one is not repairable, from what I understand. We've been using, we've been using shakers, but we don't have one here to do our testing every day. So, we need one onsite to do...
Oh, okay, so we've been using shakers for how long?
That I'm not sure.
Do we know how long our stuff, when did our stuff working?
I was not sure either.
So, is these total of all these? Individual ones here? Two thousand four thirty-two eighty-three.
There's, that would come from the Water Enterprise Fund?
Yep.
There's one large purchase and then the rest are commodities, disposables, for testing mediums and things like that.
Does anybody have a quick balance on the Water Enterprise Fund? Can I repeat?
Yes. Currently, well, as the report of two six that Michelle provided, the water, water fund is almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And fluoride is the only chemical that we ever test on our water? By state guidelines?
It's currently the only chemical we're injecting into the system, we don't chlorinate.
Okay. Is that something we have to do, or can we just do chlorine?
We have to fluorite to know, we don't have to chlorinate to...
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion in a second to approve the purchase of the fluoride testing equipment out of the Water Enterprise Fund. All say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to the next is consider completion and submission of the FY twenty-five Community Project Fund. Troy?
Oh, yes.
Fill us in on that.
This was an email that I got from, I'm sorry, received from Congressman Pete Staber. Every, all the information is there. It's just money that the federal government will give out for community project requests or community projects that are going on. What we have to do is fill out the form and submit it back to, I believe it's Congressman Staber's office. I don't know. We can find that out. So right now we'll just be asking the, asking the council to ask the city staff to complete the form and send it in. There are some concerns I have because there's no deadline right now. There will be a deadline, we don't know what that is. And then, of course, there's requirements that have to be met to actually receive the funds. And we don't know what those are either. But they're still asking us what kind of project we're going to do, when we think it will be done. So I suppose there's a possibility we fill in the blanks, put in a project and once the guidelines come out, we could be disqualified. But that's just the way things are working right now, so. I don't know if any member of the council or perhaps a member of the public would have some projects in mind that we think might fit for this, might match the funding. I think it would be a good idea to get that going. I do remember Congressman Staber saying the sooner the better, of course, to get it in. I suppose I got this email three, four weeks ago. Just wanted, you know, something for us to think about, something for the public to think about. Maybe we want to take a shot at receiving some federal money.
So this, this could be park development, it could be infrastructure development or improvement. Kind of runs a game that'll be creative.
Yeah, from what I understand, it's very open-ended right now. But I think it might, it could be to our benefit to at least get it started, get something in there. It sounds like this is done on, on a yearly basis. And this is the first time it's been, you know, made aware to me, so I don't, it can't hurt.
Do we know where part of this money's coming from, from the government?
I do not know that. I don't know if it's in here, I didn't see anything.
It's the big block. Yes. I have no idea. I didn't click on the links on here when, when it came out, but. There's one thing I was thinking about. We're putting together a grant request for engineering study for the extension of our city sewer out to Briar and the loom up there. This might be a good opportunity to maybe get some infrastructure funds to help build, design a building. Looks feasible, after initial study. Yeah, by chance, has anybody talked to Jake about this one coinciding with that? Because I know he's, his office is gonna work on that grant. Yeah, I have, I have, I have, need to call him tomorrow. Maybe you might know more, I want to ask him, I'm sure.
And Brett, at this point, it looks like they're filling the blank for the most important form, so.
Okay. Yeah, I have no problem having the office and then I can help do if we need more hands on deck. But this looks pretty, pretty basic. We'd need to put in though, what, a project, so we need to not just leave a blank.
Right.
I would say going with the project with Briar and Locust would probably be, I mean, that's gonna be the most costly project that I've seen.
Just, just to circle back here on the, the study that you're doing on the sewer. Have you contacted any of the residents on Briar and Locust that this is taking place? Because I live there and I haven't heard anything from them. It's very early on. We're just trying to figure out what we can do. We've heard the issue raised, so we're trying to get our plan in place. I think it's good to let everybody know what you're doing. Well, and that's what the grant is for. So they were going to put it all together with the grant that Boltamake are working on. And then they notify all residents just to show what we're looking at possibly. That's all it was, it was a fact-finding grant.
Sure.
So, no action, just, we're not coming for you.
You should have said transparency.
No, no, I'm fine. So I think we do that, let's list that project on that, if you guys are okay with that.
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay.
If we need the electronic actual form, I'll have it, but I think it's available through the links.
Okay. I don't know if a fire truck would.
Yeah, I don't.
You can, if you don't ask, you don't get it.
We could put both down.
I live on Briar Lane. I think you ought to talk to all the neighbors first before you go with this, because there's a lot of people that are very pissed off about you guys doing that. But I'm not letting anybody know what's going on.
And this.
I heard through the grapevine, so.
This all came up not from a city interest in expanding our system, it was from the resident. We heard from some residents whose septic were failing and they wouldn't be able to reestablish a new septic, so.
That's not true. There's two homeowners that bought houses and they got approved for new septic right away after they bought the house. And one is our neighbor and one is behind us.
I can talk to Jacob Boltamake and have him send out a letter, letting him know what, what the grant that he is going out to get. Again, there's no, this grant is just to, from what I understand, go door-to-door, ask if you guys would allow him to inspect your septic. You don't have to let anybody in, but this is just if we get the money. Because he said it's gonna be about sixty to seventy thousand dollars just to do that, and the city doesn't have that. So we're not, but again, I, I agree with Tim. I stood out in the cold, in the middle of the street because of a resident and, and showed concern about it. So that's what brought our eyes on it, I guess. But again, it's very preliminary, we're not doing any more than fact-finding.
So I, I heard it was that guy that bought the twenty acres down by you, Larry. He's the one pushing for this septic system, so he can hook up to our system, the city system. Why can't he go up to West Street? That is a way shorter distance.
I personally didn't hear from any large landlord or developer. It was an individual homeowner, it's what I heard.
He bought the land, what, last summer? Some developer?
Oh, no, it's still on the market, the twenty acres. It hasn't been sold. So right behind you. It was, a gentleman came in and, and bought, he'd been buying in parcels, I think, for a couple of years. And so he bought the four acres behind my house and behind Mike Bouwright's house to consolidate it onto twenty acres. So, but no, it's, it's still on the market, hadn't been sold yet.
But is he, he's gonna wanna buy that so he can put, develop that whole area? So wouldn't you think you'd wanna go into the shortest system instead of ripping up that whole block?
Well, I think, you know, right now, that discussion, maybe just putting the cart before the horse just yet. You know, I mean, there's probably a lot of other options. And, you know, we're all nervous, especially me, it's right next to my house, you know. But, you know, why don't we just wait and see what develops? You know, we'll still have an opportunity to voice our opinions and, and whoever passes legislation, vote him out of office.
So if the money is received, however, the work has to be done, that money has to be spent on that work, is that correct?
Yes. Preliminary investigation.
Yeah, it's not really work, it's just research.
It's a survey and research.
And it costs millions to put the sewer in.
Yeah, right. It's not a cheap project, no, that's for sure. And we get assessed, I guess, as homeowners. Don't wanna do it if we win.
Yeah, I'm just gonna throw in the idea of just a public meeting, public hearing, maybe planning commission, something like that. Hold something, put it on the agenda, invite the people with the letter. It sounds like, if I heard Larry write, even he was a little concerned about transparency and people knowing what's going on. So I'm just gonna throw that out there, I think that might be good.
Okay, I agree with that. And then, yeah, I think that's a good idea. It's a good idea and, you know, everything starts with a little bit of fact-finding and research so that we do have something accurate to present. And then just to keep in mind that, you know, there are smaller lots there. And we're just looking at this more of a, a long-term planning as well. Because you could, even if they're not running out of space now, you could run out of space eventually. And when you run out of good soil, you end up putting more sand in and having a more expensive private system being put in. So it's kind of a question of like, okay, where's that threshold and where that, you know, makes sense to, you know, crunch your numbers financially and see what makes sense. So we're not necessarily pushing anything right now, like, oh yes, it's absolutely gonna happen. We're just looking at the numbers.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
We're always transparent, so you can ask away. We're not trying to come down a grist of the road right now. It was cold when I was standing out there, by the way, too, so. No, I, we're not hiding anything. We don't know anything.
I just, this is something we've all heard, so.
So why, why don't we go ahead and get planning this schedule out? We can have everybody come and talk and, well, Boltamake can join us too, so they can fill us in on what they were actually working on, so. Okay, any other questions on? We gotta move on. Yep, that's fine. Let's go ahead and vote to submit for the FY twenty-five Community Project Fund. I say we have, it's due, so we have to get it in. I still say we list them both, the fire, fight, you know, the fire truck and then, that way we have two options. Yeah, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, Brent, I'm sorry, I need a motion, I need something to call.
Well, we had a motion in a second already to open it. Did we not?
Did I miss it? I'm sorry.
Maybe I did. Troy?
I can make the motion that we complete and submit the FY twenty-five Community Project Fund request form.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lee. All right, we can rego, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next information, our new business is the Rent dot fund. Sherry, myself and Elizabeth had a meeting with this company. It got me charged up. It's not that hard to get me charged up, but I got excited because it's a way that we can start generating some income for the city. And it also opens up part of a river that isn't explored as much from our current rental companies and the boat company and American New Rentals. I also got excited because I talked to Oak River and they said it's been going really well. Very seamless, the opportunity for, I was looking at the four-unit one for the nineteen thousand. We don't manage it, they take it, put it out, bring it back in in the winter. You can decide to have paddle boards, you can decide to have kayaks. But I think it's a great opportunity for us to partner with possibly the Lions or Parks and Rec or both. And it's gonna fundraise for them as well as bring in a little income for the city. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at the packet. The PowerPoint, each, it's in the packet, is Clint, he went over verbatim with us. The insurance policy is covered in there as well. So if somebody gets hurt, which they have not had any claims yet on, at all, any of their properties, that covers it. I did send it to Fritz just so that he would look at it, because they suggested that we go to our attorney right away just to make sure that, you know, they're on the oven up, so. But to find the money, I guess, I know that question will come up. I was just looking at the general fund, I suppose. We could put it on this grant that we just spoke about too. I know nineteen thousand seems like a lot. He said the average to get paid back is five years, if I'm not mistaken. The best ones did it in four. Can we have a motion in a second to open discussion?
Yeah.
So we don't have to go. That's fine, I'll make the motion since this is mine. I make a motion for us to open discussion for a possible purchase of Rent for Fund, the four-unit canoe rental. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Sorry, I, I just got excited. When, when this first came through, I thought it was a scam, but then the more and more I got into it, I was like, no. And then they seemed to be pretty good, so. That's my spiel. I know Elizabeth had some questions and so did Sherry while we were on the Zoom call with this company. They're out in Kansas City, Missouri. They hire somebody to maintain this from the local area, part-time. So if there's broken paddles or kayak gets broke or paddleboard gets broke, that person gets dispatched and they have equipment they put in right away. So there is a local job that it would bring in, I guess. I don't know how much they would make, he didn't really share that. The life vests are all there, you work it on an app and so you scan it. You can look at it ahead of time and, or you can look at it ahead of time and see if they're booked out. And you just go there and you scan your phone on it and you can rent it for two hours, four hours, six hours, and you can enjoy that upper part of the river. So that was my excitement about it, because it's a really cool area and I love the parks up there. We would be in charge of trying to social media blast, so people would be visiting town and know that it's up there. So we'd have to work with businesses and our website and, you know, really try to drive it. They said they would develop a website for us. Yep, they, they will. They'll put, they'll put a link and they'll have everything so we can put it right on our website. As far as Facebook or anything, if you ever wanna get into that as a city, that would be on us, we can put that out there, but. So is this filling a gap that Eric's isn't filling today? From what I understand, they don't, I mean, I don't, from what I was told, and I might be totally wrong, you can fill me in. They don't, they go up into the state park, but that little section of like above just the dam isn't utilized. So that's my ambition, I don't think people are gonna paddle from that south Lions Park all the way up. Maybe some, but.
I have a lot of information on the canoe I told.
Okay.
Some point of.
Yeah, down here.
Eric, yeah, always.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. Dom, I have Taylor's Hall's key rental from Dom and Grant Key. So currently, from my understanding for Eric, Eric Skelton, he runs people from Taylor's Falls, near like there, he has that parking lot, up to their Sunrise Landing on the Minnesota side or Wild River State Park, and then they paddle. Technically does local rentals, from my understanding, out of his location there. I'm guessing it's not a lot, because that's not his niche. We'll rent what we call local paddles, restart and stop at the same point, Minnesota interstate. These containers that are self-contained, there's other companies out there that do it. There's a fair few on the Mississippi River. They do anywhere from canoes, kayaks, stand-up paddleboards. I'm not against the city doing this from my business standpoint. Some things that you should know about, like you probably aren't aware, I would never recommend a paddle or a stand-up paddleboard on the river. It's a mess. There it may not be so bad, but other places I wouldn't recommend. Kayaks are easy, because you're gonna have to pull them. And the general public can't pull a boat very far. And they're certainly not gonna lift it, so then you drag it and you put holds in it. So a kayak is probably your best bet there. Another thing is, you're gonna make money. So therefore you're offered on the National Sceneroy, you have to get permits to do that. So you have to apply for a special use, or not a special use, commercial use authorization permit to the national park. And if they don't like what colored shirt you have on, they can deny you a permit for any reason, which they, I don't think they have ever done. You have to pay an application fee, monthly reporting of who, what, how many, a yearly report with additional information. And on top of that, you have to do, there's a fee structure. You have to pay what you guys would make. You have to pay three percent of gross, gross receipts. It's a tiered system, it's like income tax. So if you go above X dollars, it gets more. And that's regardless if you're a city or a private business. So that's something to keep aware of. And that does take active management. So you just can't go in and begin the year and end the year. They are introducing more and more. They are introducing more and more, um, reporting requirements as that, uh, has grown over the years. Information for you.
So Eric's, and I assume your operations have, have to do these reports today?
Yes. Yep.
Cause I'm generally not a fan of the public doing what the private sector can do. But if, if there's a void that nobody's filling, that's less of a concern for me. I, that would be my only concern, the impact that Eric's, you don't do business above the river, correct? Or above the dam, I'm sorry.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Do you wanna partner?
Excuse me?
Do you wanna partner?
We could talk.
Okay.
That would not be out of the question. Either from a financial side or an operational side. So something to consider.
Cause it would seem, I know we would be for going some revenue in the process, but it would seem if somebody is already doing that reporting and has the permits, that they could just seamlessly integrate that into their operation or more easily.
We could. It'd be very easy to integrate from a operational and reporting side, from the government reporting side.
Do you do any of those containers?
Yep. Nope, I've looked at them though. Biggest thing is you need it. From the one, I've, from, I looked at this one. It looks like you just need cell phone service. You don't need internet or power. Power's a big deal. You have service there, so. It's, I think it's very cool. You not having to be there is the best thing, cause you're gonna rent very few. I would be skeptical of telling what the cost breakdown of revenue share is. Five years seems ambitious, but I haven't looked at the numbers very closely. Local rentals are challenging, especially if you're trying to start a whole new, you're starting a whole new business there, that doesn't have high traffic volumes, that is looking to kayak. Off sixteen there.
It is build up what Brandon was, um, saying before. So he said average year was five and the best was three. And he says the worst they've seen so far is seven years until it starts to pay for itself.
I look at their locations on their map where you can, you know, get their membership or whatever. And there are a lot of those seem to be inside heavily used parks, which I really think, cause you go look, oh, there's a kayak and go put around for an hour. This looks more like a destination location at that park. Cause we can get done. I think it's probably worth a try. Your risk is so low.
Sure. I know it said fifty-fifty, right? So they average rental was twenty, twenty dollars to twenty-five. He thought maybe we'd give twenty-five dollars for, uh, two hours? Was it? I think he said.
I think so.
Yeah. Um, but we have to share it fifty-fifty until five years. So it's a five-year contract after we pay the nineteen. And then after that, it's negotiable. Who knows what we negotiate then? But I'm just letting you know too, so we can talk. But, um.
And, you know, he said there's more of these companies out there, maybe we should do some comparisons and quotes.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and thank you, Dominic, for coming forward. I think you had some excellent information. I think we should probably do a little bit more research on this, so I'm, I'm just gonna make a motion to table it this time.
The insurance requirements to operate, uh, basically a commercial venture on the national park are higher than one mix.
Yeah. Uh, I guess this company covers liability insurance.
They made it sound like they cover everything and we did ask him about the national, or the waterway that we're on. And he had never had any problems, but the questions that he brought up, we didn't ask. So I agree with tabling it. We can ask him these questions, we'll, we'll find others, we'll talk. It's just an idea of, I want more people to use those parks, I love that part of the river anyway. But I mean, I just think, um, there's an opportunity, a void there that we can open up and have people enjoy those beautiful parks and the part of the river, so.
I wouldn't want to infringe on existing businesses, so, um, I think it's a great idea. And, uh, you know, we should all have some conversation about it down the road.
I just don't wanna see the city go a financial situation where they don't know. We know the river.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Dominic.
Would you mind, oh, sorry, oh, we're, um, would you mind leaving your contact in?
Sure. Please God help.
Oh, okay, I'll get these, thank you.
Troy has a motion to, uh, table this, uh, until further date. We won't set that date yet.
Perfect.
Tim seconded, all right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and next is, uh, support of the state, uh, support of Safe Routes to School. We got a request from the Center City Mayor Jill. They're doing a project for, it is at every location, I think. It's a whole school, all the school districts. And so they just want us to sign the form saying we're on. Um, you know, we agree with it. I, I'm totally for it. Um, I did reach out to make sure, because our EDC is working on Safe Routes to School with our school and the Bryant Nature Center. I wanted to make sure that wouldn't take away from what we've, what Diane Nelson has been working on. And, um, so she had found out it doesn't, so this is separate and we can still continue to work on our own projects in town too, so. That's all I know about this.
No risk?
No, no, no risk at all. We're just basically saying we're, we're, we're in all the Lakes Area communities, so. Any other questions? Okay. Okay. I, I don't even know if we need to vote for that. I mean, I, is that something we need to vote for, Fritz, since it's not us doing anything? We're just letting it know we agree?
Well, through you.
Have I decided anything?
The city had recommended, we should take a poll.
Okay.
Somebody went through all the hard work of typing out this motion at the bottom of the page.
Anders Fath.
Does somebody wanna make a motion for it?
I will make the motion, uh, to, to approve or, I guess, approve and extend a letter for an apply for Safe Routes to School planning grant. You do the type and the read and then.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next is, uh, the discussion of our new audio/video equipment quote that's in the packet. Both me and I can kind of, we can combine, I guess we should have said we could have combined the two. Um, so a while back, a long time ago, we bought equipment and it's sitting in the hallway. And a lot of people are wondering why we don't have the camera, the sound system and all that that we've already purchased. Um, we ran into where we can't do the install ourselves. Um, time constraints and just technology, we don't know what we're doing necessarily, um, to make it work. So we brought in a video/audio company, um, that you can see with the, if you've seen the packet. Um, EMI gave us a quote, but they also came through and they looked at all their current equipment. And they kinda looked at the room and they gave us a broken down plan on different stages to do it. And, um, we can use the camera, but most of the other equipment is not gonna work. Reason being, they, they said that we need somebody that can monitor the equipment and make it all work together. And if something breaks on what we have installed from what we bought, our office staff would need to know exactly how to fix it. And I don't think that's fair to them, I don't think it's fair for us. They also indicated that we're not gonna get rid of the feedback that we haven't had for a while, but it does come and go. And it also isn't loud like that. Uh, the new stuff would be, so we wouldn't have to stand with it right in our mouth. So, um, they provided us a quote, I, I went up, got a second quote. We found these guys through Midco, uh, because they have somebody out of Forest Lake that uses them for other city councils. Wyoming use them, um, and they've done a great job. So that, that's why we kinda started the ball. So. That's where we're at. I, I mean, we can do a motion in a second if, if we wanna vote for them to install the first phase, uh, where we can at least get the, uh, main camera in, hooked up. Um, but eventually we're gonna have to buy some more equipment and.
It's even that we stick with the equipment we have right now, that I'm using right now.
Yep. And we could get, we could find somebody else. I mean, I don't know a lot of, uh, audio/video companies around here, but, um, we could do some more search and get a second quote. I have no problem with that, but.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would like to see additional proposals, but I'd also suggest we talk with Jeff, Jack Deppke. He's the coordinator of Chisago Lakes Public TV. And, um, a couple of the Chisago County municipalities use them. And I think when we first started talking about this, I mentioned he's a resource. Um, and it seems to me, if my recall is correct, we had kinda sticker shot at what it would cost to do it right. And it seems about the same price.
Yeah.
So I would say, um, just to make sure, he, he's a local expert that I think can help us with this. I think we should get additional proposals and, uh, see if he has any input or can assist us in managing that process as well.
She said Jack, you read it.
Oh, he did.
You can call him, he might come.
They have his number.
Uh, did you ever join the cable commission?
We didn't.
Cause they all set the stuff up.
That was one of the options and that's where we had the sticker shot from.
Yeah.
Um, but there's two local access channels that we could broadcast over.
That's a big group, right?
Yeah.
One is.
Well, even putting the equipment.
I know, yeah.
They all do that.
I think it was twenty thousand, I'm not tall, something.
You don't go out?
Yeah.
Um, and it seemed kind of easy to use, but.
Yeah, they said what we have right now isn't, and it's not powerful enough for, even if we replace the cabinet with the equipment we have, it just wouldn't be powerful enough, so. I agree, we should get another quote. Um, this one just took a while to get in the packet, um, but, um.
So I can reach out to Jack and see if somebody replaced him or if he'd be willing to give us some assistance. So, Jack Deppke, um, he, he'd been with, in this position for quite a while, I think.
Do we have anybody here that's been watching the videos? How's the audio working with that? Can you tell? Can you hear me? Can you hear us? Can you hear me right now? Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm probably going through the sticker shock again, I think, cause I, I go through and have these up and we're pushing fifty thousand. I mean, thirty, seventy, forty thousand, I jumped on. At this time, I think things are going well. Our video is going up, right? It's going up online. People can watch what's happening. People can hear me now when they're here, so. I guess I would motion to table or look for further proposals for consideration.
Okay.
Just gonna add some of the feedback that we are, are getting from people is like, you, you know, if we are having those issues uploading it or, you know, sometimes it takes several tries still. And, um, it's just a matter of timeliness. So if we had it, you know, the more high-tech system, it would be, was it live?
Yep.
Yeah, live to where now people are having to wait until Michelle can, you know, physically upload it.
And we avoid.
So what's that? What's that worth to, to people?
They did say that we could get a different, they did give an option until we could afford all those two is directly hooking up the camera back there through the laptop so that it would be live and it would have continuous upload. I mean, that's another option we can look at.
And if there's anybody out there now or when they're watching the video, if they have any suggestions, any way they might know somebody who can help us out, willing to donate some time, please come forward.
Well, we have a motion to table it. I think, Tim, if you would, reach out to Jack, that'd be great. Um, and we can go from there. But there was no rush, I just wanted to show how much this is gonna be. They did make it mention that everything is concealed when they come in and do it, so we don't have speakers hanging out or anything like that. They said it would look really well and if any breaks, they're there, um, to change and update, so. I mean, obviously we don't have fifty thousand dollars for our video/audio right now. But let's just do that then, so. Uh, do I have a second to table?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay. Any other discussion, Tim?
No.
Lee?
No.
Okay. All in favor of tabling the new audio/video equipment from EMI? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. And we'll just kinda roll right over to our current equipment that we purchased last year. Um, we had been working with Music Connection on possibly getting a refund and, or what we can do with that.
Right. I, I finally got ahold when they had been at a big, uh, audio conference thing out in California. And he was gonna look at it over there at Music Connection and, uh, he hasn't gotten back to me yet. So that's where we're at.
Okay. So is this, do we think?
Yeah, yeah, me my question. So there's a refund?
Yeah, we're asking to see if we can return what we bought and get a refund. Or a partial refund. If not, we do have the League's website that has Garage Sales site, that we could try to sell this equipment to another city that might be able to.
Yeah. How much is?
I don't remember what I paid. It was, what was it, five, five or six thousand?
Okay. The reusing, some of our.
Yeah.
That proposal. Yeah, the camera, the camera is in the proposal, there's a couple of other things I think.
Yeah, it wasn't all returned, so. So. Okay, that's what we're working on anyway. Thanks, Lee.
Yep.
All right, uh, final for new business is setting the evaluation for Kevin Gruber for his one-year anniversary on March eleventh. Tim?
Yeah, I talked with Kevin, he's available that day. It's, uh, our first council meeting in March. Um, suggest that we schedule it for four thirty or five o'clock.
March first.
March eleventh.
Comment?
Please.
Um, that, uh, that date of the council meeting is going to come up on the next agenda to be rescheduled to the eighteenth. So I don't know if that's, hopefully, um, a role. And we're requesting the, the change of date due to the elections the week before and getting the packets out the day after the election. It's not possible.
Do we wanna see the eighteenth works?
I, I can't, I won't be here, but I can, like, what, what Lee did last time, I can just prepare my comments and advance.
What a different day that we, you know, I mean, we could still, could we still do the eleventh for the? Because I know, does the eleventh work for everybody? I'm right on here.
What, what was your concern with the eleventh? Sherry?
Uh, that we wouldn't have packets, council packets ready and, um, to go out on time and be posted due to the election as the, the day before, that we wouldn't post the packets and get those out to you.
But we can still do an eval?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, we can do it whatever time, really.
Sure.
Yeah, whatever time it was for everybody, I'm here, so. You wanna do it in the?
Replace the city council meeting with eval. Does that work?
Okay. Okay, six p.m. Okay. So eval, March eleventh, six p.m. Thank you. Okay.
And does that have, does it, does it, does it open the full meeting for that?
You will.
Okay, we stopped it then, huh?
Right, he, uh, last time he requested closed, it's gonna go again, but good point. Either way, we'll have a poster, so. We'll consider it closed and let's see you hear it otherwise.
Yeah, nevermind. Okay. All right, well, um, I guess I need a motion in a second to adjourn tonight's meeting.
If, if, if I can, I just wanna make notes so people know that this, I believe this was intentional in the packet. I don't think it was mistaken, we have a Chisago County Sheriff's report at the end. And I also had an email from a resident, so I just wanted to bring that out, that that's also part of the packet. It's, it's there, if people wanna look over. Cause the crime statistics would be on there. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, motion and a second to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, that's great, thank you.